Our invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Jerry Storrs is Mr. Oh, there you are. From the Sunland Lutheran Church of Casa Grande. And then following our prayer, I'm going to ask Supervisor Sertie to give our Pledge of Allegiance. Those that wish to join in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, you can please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, Creator and Ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, including Kevin, Jeffrey, Mike, Stephen and Jeff, that guided by your Spirit, they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution and unwavering in duty, that under them our Pinell County may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
I hope you all joined me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now call this meeting in order. I know, I did kind of hit that kind of hard, didn't I? Been beefing up a little bit too much, I guess. Just as a reminder, there's a couple of things. One of them is we may take a recess if necessary. We do have at 12:45, we'll take a recess around that time and then we have a meeting following that in that we're doing a dinner with some of our volunteers. And then we'll reconvene about 2:00, 2:30 at the latest. Okay? We have Supervisor Miller, who's absent at this time. I would like to excuse him. Our first item on the agenda is Call to the Public. And I would just like to remind the public as you come up to express yourself that you be respectful in every form or fashion. You know, this is an opportunity for your to share your frustrations, whatever the case may be, but I think we can do it in an orderly fashion. So with that, Call to the Public, consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinell County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing our staff regarding the matter or rescheduling the matter for a later date, for further consideration, decision at a later time. So with that being said, I have two cards here for Call to the Public. The first one is Alfrin Trout. Did I get that right?
Close.
Oh. Well, apologize and if you can come forth and give us your name and thank you.
My name is Arlen Trout. My family and I've lived here on Kings Ranch Ridge and Gold Canyon, Arizona for over half a century. I play guitar, but I'm here this morning to blow the whistle. I spoke to this board on March 6th and March 20th, and I asked for assistance regarding Sheriff Lamb and local land developers. You asked for a report from Pinell County Attorney Kent Volkmer, and that was the last I heard from any of you. You have hired outside attorneys with public funds and are refusing to respond to my updates, new evidence and formal requests for assistance. On March 29th, '24, my neighbors and I testified against Kenneth Dean Russell and his associates in Pinell County Superior Court. This testimony regarded trespass, violations of protective orders and the final court ruling, assaults and their legal easement and property damage. This also involved a failed and fraudulent attempt to abandon their legal easements and acquire building permits with false information that included my family and our neighbor's private driveway. Kenneth Russell threw Pinell County under the bus during that trial. He is alleging Pinell County officials and sheriff's deputies guided and encouraged him to target the Trout family and our property. Russell's documented actions, allegations and latest threats during and after trial are ongoing and concerning. Brent Billingsley, head of the Pinell County Planning and Development Department, informed me that he has an attorney and cannot assist or even speak to me. I remind the board that no one involved in this matter has filed lawsuits or made any legal claims against Pinell County. We have not given you any legal or ethical reason to hire personal attorneys with public funds. We have not said or done anything that should allow you to refuse to assist my family and neighbors in resolving this scandal. I'm in closing. I'm not a party to any lawsuit. I do not have an attorney or a claim against Pinell County. I'm a victim of crime, a whistleblower asking for assistance. I'm again requesting a timely and meaningful hearing and investigation of these troubling matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Kathy Lehman.
Chairman, Supervisor, Supervisor McClure, Kathy Lehman, resident of Florence. An article appeared yesterday in a newspaper about the costs associated with Supervisor Kavanaugh's litigation in Pinell County. It stated that the cost has been $169,291 in legal fees and insurance deductibles. I know that Supervisor Kavanaugh has had multiple claims and lawsuits. Can you please tell me how much Pinell County and taxpayers have had to pay on all the claims while he's been a supervisor for Pinell County? I'd like to know if that figure includes the cost of most recent claims or litigation filed against the county recorder. An additional question is how can Supervisor Kavanaugh continue to serve the county when he's filed a complaint again against the recorder and the county? Does he get to vote on everything? Does he have to recluse himself when talking about election and recorder department activities? How does that all work? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lehman. Do we have any, that's the only cards I have. Is there anybody from the public that would risk to come on forward? Sorry about being tongue tied there. If you could state your name and approximate, okay.
Chairman Goodman, Supervisors. My name is Dea Padaseki. I live in unincorporated Pinell County near Lost Dutchman State Park. I will present my credentials, the most common criteria used by other speakers. Members of my family have served in the U.S. Armed Services from the War of Independence until today. Growing up, I sold poppies each Veterans Day, placed flags on veterans' graves on Memorial Day, box checked for patriotism. I'm a Christian. I am baptized, confirmed. I have a 13-year perfect attendance pin for Sunday School. I still attend services regularly, volunteer with my church locally and at the national level. I have favorite Bible passages, Matthew 25, Proverbs 34, Micah 6 and Exodus 20. Box checked. Also, I have a problem with my hands, but that's it. I lived in Iowa for the first 22 years of my life. Iowa is rural and red. For the next 35 years, I lived in Easton, Washington, which is on the other side of Cascade Curtain from the I-5 corridor. And for the last 16 years, I've lived in Pinell County. I spent my youth going to the Legion Fish Fry on Friday nights, attending high school sports, participating in summer reading contests at the library, swimming at the city pool and playing with neighborhood kids. It was very Mayberry-esque. Box checked, not an urban dweller. I propose three changes to the electoral process. One, Pinell County should switch from precinct voting to voting centers. This would eliminate the "but I don't know where I'm supposed to vote" complaint. Two, the state of Arizona should adopt ranked order voting, which has advantage of determining the candidate with the strongest support, encouraging civil campaigning and eliminating the need for multiple elections. Finally, the Electoral College should be abolished. In selecting the president, the voter, the vote of a voter in North Dakota should not count more than the vote of someone in New York. Five times in our history, this has happened, 1824, 1876, 1888, 2016. There was a sign in my high school gym that read, "When the one great scorer comes, he will not write whether you won or lost, but how you played the game." I want the following boxes checked on my scorecard. Tenacious, passionate, fair, good sport, respectful of the game, other players, coaches, officials and the rules. There are 194 days until the presidential election. What will your scorecard read? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others that would like to speak at Call to the Public? Okay, seeing that there's none. Oh, do we have somebody? Oh, come on up.
Jack Madashoni at Apache Junction. I just wanted to, number one, let you know I respect you guys completely, 100%. You guys are doing an outstanding job in most cases. I am going to be attending a meeting though that in Gold Canyon probably Friday, listening to people about the roads of Pinell County. And part of the thing I saw on there was a suggestion that there's going to be another half a cent TPT tax maybe placed on the ballot in 2024. And I'd like to go in advance and just tell you, as a citizen, I oppose that. I think we need to take care of the TPT tax that we passed, that we had a lot of problems with first and figure out a way of maybe recouping some of the money that's going to be refunded. I think there's, and it works, I think there's a couple of people on the board here that got some good thoughts on that. So I just wanted to share that and regarding the elections coming up, don't, I mean, I'm all in favor of just leaving it like it is. That's the way the United States was formed and seemed to have worked the last 200-plus years. Outstanding country, whether we like some of the issues that are happening or not. And I'm very thankful we don't have a Ukrainian flag flying up here, that we are smart enough to know that this is the United States, this is not Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see anybody else that wished to come forward? Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh, you were actually named specifically. Would you like to?
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a citizen has raised an issue where $169,000 in legal fees have been expended because the board got sued and I got sued over a reporting issue. Our handbook specifically deals with issues that are what you might call mandatory reporting. So an issue came up and I counseled with the HR staff, county deputy county manager, who pointed out that you have, Supervisor has a duty to report upon hearing certain items. I was a little bit concerned. What followed was a lawsuit, a claim for $13 million that was eventually settled for 20 grand. So $169,000, thereabouts, was expended to allow the plaintiffs to get to a $20,000 settlement. It's regrettable. But that doesn't change the policy or doing what's right. So you have to do what's right. If someone brings you an issue, the policy remains. If the same situation presented today, I would have to do the same thing. So I appreciate the question and it's, lawyers are expensive, $500, $600 an hour. It's easy to rack up a bunch of money really fast. But if that case were handled differently by the county attorney's office, you might not have ever heard about it. So I appreciate the question and we get these, we get notices of claims all the time. The lady mentioned that I issued a notice of claim with respect to our county recorder over potential statements made to her staff. Well, the law says when you, when a county government or a county official does something wrong, you have 60 days to notify of that potential harm. So that's what I've done. There's no lawsuit. I haven't filed a lawsuit. We don't know the facts and circumstances surrounding that. That information came in a group of emails from a whistleblower who was talking about other problems within the Elections Department. So those emails would likely have been disclosed eventually. So I followed the law, which was established by the state legislator, to give notice within 60 days of learning of a potential harm. So there is no lawsuit. And so we'll examine that issue in the future. So I appreciate your question.
Okay, there's a, in regards to Mr. Trout, I would like to give direction to get caught up on the matter. I know, I do remember him coming before the board and perhaps if we can put that on and it, anyway, if we could get a full, if we can get some kind of report back in regards where that status is and things of that nature. The gentleman that just spoke recently, if somebody from staff could meet with him in regards to the meeting that's coming up and encourage anybody in the public to attend that meeting, it gives a full explanation of everything. So, but if somebody could take the time to visit with that gentleman, it'd be appreciated. Is there anybody else that would like to? Okay, good. Okay. So we've, we're going to move on to item number two. Brother Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Brother Chairman. So back on April 3rd, we had a construction progress update event with LG Energy Solutions on how their manufacturing facility is progressing and sort of in lieu of a groundbreaking ceremony, so to speak. But before we get into the video, which I think was very well done, I wanted to take the time to thank some people, especially to thank this board for your strategic prioritization of a vibrant economy, of STEM manufacturing and everything that goes with that. And I want to thank you, Chairman, for your leadership in your district because you have collaborated with the stakeholders and the community members to make sure that not only is this business successful, but that the community is also benefiting and not harmed and that the neighbors to this facility are considered and cared for. So thank you for that. And then I do want to mention that, and you all know and have seen this, as we've been living this for a couple of years, when you're competing globally at the highest level, when a business is doing that and when we're doing that, to win these businesses and make sure that these are executed successfully within our county, every aspect matters and there are critical elements, many critical elements, moving at the same time, that if you can execute on these, you will win and it will work. And if you can't, you won't. And they'll go somewhere else and they'll put that enterprise there. So I do want to thank some of the Supervisor Sertie in particular as well for supporting and helping to facilitate the workforce training center in this district, or these are new skills to our community that just quite frankly didn't exist before that we need to develop. And then I want to thank certain staff members that were critical, that changed elements that allowed this property not only to stay afloat, but then to expand. So Deputy County Manager Himanshu Patel, Joe Ortiz, Celeste Garza, Chris Wanamaker, on working with everybody on a complicated solution for Jermaine Road, which a road may sound simple, but within a regional connectivity and industrial site and a neighborhood and state land and SRP, it gets complicated real fast. And so I want to thank everybody for their ingenuity and innovation and creativeness and to come up with a solution and be able to execute it with all the parties involved and in agreement. And then I also want to thank Anew Jane because she works really hard to make sure that the air quality is up to standard and to make sure it's mitigated and in many cases exceeds what the federal standards are. So I want to thank her for that hard work. And then I want to thank Chris Keller and Kevin Costello right here next to me because there are many hours of development and negotiating solid agreements that benefit both, you know, the community, the county and enable a business to thrive here. So thank you to both of them for that. And then before we show the video, I do want to mention something because I was at the event, most of the board members were not able to attend because they were in the board meeting. And Chairman Goodman gave his speech and I want to commend a couple of things. One, you emphasized in front of our governor how important the funding of the 24 and the extension of the 24 was in the decision-making of this project and bringing this project here. So thank you for that. And I know you mentioned this in the video, but what you said resonated with the audience and everybody in there. We talk a lot about how much money is going on and how many jobs are coming, which is all very important. But you said the most important thing is this gives workers more time at the dinner table for discussions with their families, more time at the sporting events with their kids, and money cannot replace those things. And I can tell with the audience and the companies how much that resonates going forward. So thank you. So without any further ado, Natasha, if you could please play that video.
And we got, and we got a construction update from LG Energy Solution.
Many of the LG leadership was here.
And were able to actually visit the site.
When you drive by it, the massiveness of it is impressive.
We've seen a lot of the construction from the roadway, but it was just so great to be able to step foot, to see the activity that's happening there, the amount of workers there, the construction going vertical. It's incredibly exciting.
For these different construction companies to be working together, collaborating together in the effort, that thing's going to be open by December of 2025, the first plant. And then by the following year in 2026, the completion of the second plant will be done.
The timeline is very aggressive. I'm very impressed, but again, it speaks to the partnership between the county, the state, the town of Queen Creek, all the other entities involved.
This project alone is going to bring $5.5 billion in investment on their part.
This is a big investment for not only Queen Creek or the county, but the state.
Not to mention all the jobs that are going to be provided.
We are delivering on our commitment to bring high-paying jobs to our community. So we know that a far majority of our residents and Pinell County residents travel outside of our jurisdiction to go to work and a significant amount of time spent on the road. So to be able to bring those high-wage jobs to our region is so impactful.
Bring that time that they're spending on the road back to the home, where they're going to be able to spend the time and effort with their children, with their wives, with their husbands. And to me, that's where the quality of life begins. We as a county took on the role of making sure that we would provide a way for their employees to be trained. The training center will begin in Apache Junction. We've put up the money to build the building as well as help supply some of the things that are needed in there. I know LG is going to be investing in all these, a lot of the equipment and everything that's going to be necessary for them to have. And that facility will be at the campus in Apache Junction.
The training, it is tremendous for LG Energy Solution because it trains their future employees, but also to provide that training to the residents of Queen Creek, Pinell County. Truly a win-win.
It'll provide an opportunity for them to start production immediately as soon as those doors open.
Partnership between the town of Queen Creek and Pinell County is incredible. I feel like it couldn't be better just going through this project. This is a tremendous project with a lot of moving pieces.
I haven't had the opportunity to work with a lot of foreign countries. It's been really a pleasure. I told their CEO of their company that I've sat in a few meetings with his staff and I'm telling you, the respect that they have for our area, for our communities, for us as individuals was really humbling to me.
Thank you, Chairman, that's all.
Thank you, Leo. Item number three, Supervisor District's Updates. Any current events and things of that nature that's taking place in our, in our neck of the woods, so to speak? Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have anything you wanted to?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First of all, in my old district, just south of my current district, I want to congratulate Randolph for being included in the National Register of Historic Places, as well as an old project I worked on, now Supervisor McClure is in charge of. But Mike Wiesner out of Saddle Brook finally got the situation sorted out with the FCC and getting local television stations. It took, only took 11 years and Mr. McClure may have additional details, but I'm glad to see that come to fruition. Thank you.
Supervisor McClure.
Yeah, to go, to add to that, yes, we sat with FCC attorneys, cable, or satellite TV attorneys, we sat with Nielsen ratings. Who else did we do, Mr. Costello?
I think that, oh, yes, the Nielsen, that covers it, I think.
So we, and we did a survey last summer of about 14,000 homes to see if we could persuade the FCC to change their mind, and they did. So that was very exciting. It's only, it's only about, I think it's only about four places in the country that do this. Satellite typically just stops right at the county line. For some reason, their beam from satellite comes down, has a square line to it. So we helped them figure out the geometry and they can actually go into the other county now. So we're pretty excited about that.
Good. Thank you. Supervisor Sertie.
Yeah, I want to expound on something that Leo Lou talked about, the Pinell County workforce, that we're also trying to develop summertime youth employment for the high school kids as well, starting with Superior Kearney, Dudleyville. And hopefully that can be successful and we can do that countywide and try to keep kids busy during the summer, which will make them want to stay here and live in Pinell County after they graduate too. And also, you know, my District 5 is known for the events and the attractions that we have. And we just completed Country Thunder and we have a video of how much of a task it is for the Sheriff's Department to manage that and what an awesome job they do on it, if we can go to that.
We're at Country Thunder.
To keep this infrastructure intact, you have to have just about every county facility there is and every county organization in here. We've got food safety vendors, we've got the county fire marshal out here, officers from Florence PD, Coolidge PD, Casa Grande PD. So every single county agency really works together to make this happen.
On a typical day, we'll travel to restaurants, school grounds, cafeterias, campgrounds, pools, just about everything that's permitted with the county. We'll make sure that it's safe for the public to be eating, swimming in.
Ribbon fries, curly fries, funnel cakes, full-on corn dogs.
This one's way different. There's tons of people out here. We have over 35 food vendors, food vendors and bars that are out here that we have to inspect, as well as the campsites. We have six different inspectors out today. We have one who's just doing bars. We have four people doing all of these mobile food units and food booths. And then we have one who's checking campground.
All you need is somebody to get sick here, you know? So to have all these food vendors here, you know, everybody's got to be exactly the same.
We look for food temperatures, making sure that everybody's washing their hands, hygiene, all of that sort of stuff to make sure that the food they're preparing is safe. A lot of the people have been doing it so long.
We've been here probably 12 years now, 12 or 13 years.
They know what they're doing, but they want to make sure that everyone is being safe in order to keep that trust between the customers and their businesses.
Yeah, we need them, you know, just to make sure that we're doing everything on the up and up.
And make sure that people keep coming back, keep coming and buying. And make sure that people keep coming back, keep coming and buying their food.
For one weekend a year, we create a city of 30,000 people out here. It takes everybody, all hands together on that to make it happen.
These places here really respect food safety. They want to make sure that the customers are safe. They don't want something that's this big for their business to hurt them.
And I didn't mean to slight the Health Department and all the other departments that make this happen, and the town of Florence also, and everybody comes together to make this a great event.
Should we break for lunch now? Those chicken, or those turkey wings, whatever they are, boy, they look good. I thank you, brethren, and for what your, your comments and things that you, and giving an update in your districts and what's going on there. I think that's important that we communicate all this to our residents. And, you know, when I first came into office, one of the things that I really felt a strong need for was that we tell our story. Somebody else is going to, and if we don't, somebody else will. And I, and I commend all of you for, and our staff for actually doing that. This last week, I took a flight with SRP, and the, the need for addressing and, and looking and evaluating our water supply has been at the forefront of my mind, along with these other, with the other board members that sit here. And so SRP was willing to take us up. There was a group of us, and our cameraman went with us so that we could tell our story. And we started off at Bartlett Dam, and then we flew around all the way up to Roosevelt Lake, and then came down to Apache Lake, Canyon Lake, and Swirl Lake. And I'm, I'm happy to tell you that we're at 90-plus percent of those reservoirs are full. They're releasing water right now because down the, the Salt River, they have built different recharging areas where they actually flood those areas, and it will recharge into the natural aquifer that we currently have. And so the efforts that SRP has taken over the years is very noticeable. And now with the expansion that they're proposing on the Bartlett Dam, which will increase the capacity of water supply just in that lake alone, almost double of what it currently holds. And so I, we were, I was, I was extremely impressed on the efforts that they're doing. And, you know, we're right in the middle of negotiations on the, on the Colorado River and what's going on there with the other seven states. And we seem to be at odds in a lot of different ways, and we're trying to work through a lot of those things. And I know Supervisor Miller is part of the, the task force that the governor appointed, and he's doing an extremely good job. In addition to that, I have a video that I wanted to, we, we went out and we met with EPCOR, and we shot a video about the measures and things since they've taken over from Johnson Utilities and bought that utility out. Prior to their taking it over, there wasn't safe water that was going back into our aquifer. And that's what this video's all about, the measures that EPCOR has been taking that will add back to our EPCOR, to our EPCOR, to our, our water supply. So with that, let's, let's, if you can show that video.
We're at the new Copper Basin wastewater plant. The Copper Basin plant was brought online February 16th at a reduced flow rate, and then about 1.1 to 1.2 million by the end of the year.
The amount of technology and infrastructure that they put into this facility is not only going to help us today, but into the future for the next 10, 15 years.
The goal is to effectively treat wastewater for the sand tan community so that water can be used to replenish the aquifer, or it can be reused in some of the local farms for irrigation water.
It's now able to go back into the aquifer is majorly big. Johnson Utilities, as long as they were out here, never, ever had the affluent water at the level that it needed to be to recharge back into the system, back into our aquifer. Johnson Utilities actually purchased this property over 20 years ago, and their intent and purpose behind it was to do this.
It's at a low spot in this region, and it drains a lot of the surrounding area.
For those many years that they didn't get it done, and then all the growth and everything that took place, and then at one point during 2017 and 18, and we started having overflows, we were actually operating under third-world conditions here.
Obviously, the stories that you guys have all heard, sewer flowing in the streets, low water pressure issues, we've worked hard over the last six years to, to correct a lot of those issues, and, and, and happy to report that we've been successful in doing that. And, and I commit to you that we'll, we'll continue to find those things and resolve them.
At some point, they're going to be shifting all the sewer to be treated right here in this facility for multiple homes to come, for what's currently here, to, they're going to ultimately shut down Section 11.
Section 11 is a lagoon-style wastewater plant. It's an old outdated process. This facility will be the direct replacement for Section 11.
When we walked up and the odors here, there's none, no odors. This is a state-of-the-art system that hasn't been in this area, never.
We use this room to analyze the process on a daily and maybe even hourly basis.
The purpose of the lab is to check turbidity, check chlorine residuals, inspect our biology. We want to understand where our biology is at in their 30-day life cycle. We can check the weight, we can check the population density, but all these, all these checks is to verify that the wastewater process is working correctly. We also build a training room for Copper Basin where we not only just teach an operator to pass a certification qualification, but we teach them how to pull the levers and push the buttons to do the day-to-day work that, that really brings value to an organization like EPCOR.
For every area that's in a desert, this type of facility is, it's imperative in order to be able to move forward in a positive way. And that's what EPCOR's done here.
I had to grin really quick because when I talked about the smell, anybody that's lived around the, the Section 11 that I was talking about, I remember we were doing a video on it, telling our story. And I was trying to get it right, and I just, just came to me, I thought, how many of you guys have been driving along the road here with your, with your spouse? And she looks over and you go, seriously? Did you really? And so, anyway, anyway. So with that being said, I don't see that we have any more that needs to be done on that one. So item number four, this is the 2024 primary and general election report on elections preparation and the election infrastructure update information. This is for information only. Do we have, is Dana or somebody here? Okay. Oh, we got a video. Okay, all right.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, members of the board. Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder. Today, you're seeing a presentation because I am in Portland, Oregon. I thank you for this opportunity to present some updates on the Pinal County Elections Department and Office of the Recorder. For the primary election, Pinal County filing officers received 24 nomination packets. They counted thousands of signatures on hundreds of sheets of paper. We also received nomination packets for precinct committee men. The reimbursement request to the Arizona Secretary of State's office has been completed. As soon as reimbursement has been received and the final invoices have been paid, we will be able to provide to the voters of Pinal County what the PPE costs the taxpayers. As of last report, the Pinal County Elections Department and voter registration and avid department, early voting, will all be moving into the new votes building approximately mid-May. Why is that interesting? Well, May 1st, 90-day notices go out. So in the middle of this transition, the team will continue to move forward. Some other dates to be thinking about as we move closer to the primary and general election. Yuakava ballots for the primary election will go out June 15th. The last date to register to vote for the primary election is July 1st. Early ballots and in-person early voting will start July 3rd. The primary election is July 30th. We are currently recruiting for election cycle temps on both the early voting and Elections Department sides. These duties will include activities such as couriers, signature verification, reconciliation, and receiving areas. We encourage people to apply at Pinal jobs. Pinal County has, as of April 1st, 262,470 active voters. Of those, 172,174 on active early voting. We would like to encourage people that once they receive their 90-day notice to please ensure, if they are party not designated, independent, or other, to please mark if they would like a nonpartisan, Republican, or Democratic-style ballot. Return your notice no later than May 15th. There's a lot going on in Pinal County, so we encourage, if you have any questions about our processes, would like to take a tour of the current facility, are looking forward to one of our Tuesday tours in our new facility, please feel free to check out Pinal Votes. We are available on social media and of course, the Pinal County website. If you have direct questions in regard to early voting, please contact 520-866-7560. To update your voter registration information, 520-866-6830. Thank you again for being a partner in democracy.
Thank you for that. Number five, we have an announcement by Supervisor Sertie of his appointment of Richard Anderson to the opening space.
Yeah, I had an opening on that commission, and Richard seems like a natural. As of right now, he's a volunteer wilderness ranger for the Tonto National Forest. He works all around Peralta Regional Park. So he has an understanding as the county shifts towards building regional parks. And I just, I'm just very pleased to get him onto this commission and like to give him a certificate if he's here.
Is he here? Do you see?
And I have to put a leash on Mishka because I see there's another dog out there.
Item number six, discussion, approval, disapproval of the Pinal County Attorney's Office request for the Pinal County Board of Supervisors to declare the week of April 21st through April 27th, 2024 as National Crime Victims' Right Week.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I'm here on behalf of County Attorney Volkmer. He is away at a conference. But as you stated, Mr. Chairman, this item is for the board to approve a proclamation recognizing the week of April 21st to April 27th as National Crime Victim Rights Week. If the board approves the proclamation, the proclamation will be read into the record by Sharon Woodard, the Director of Victim Services.
Okay. Is there any comments or anybody? We have a motion, emotion, a motion, a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item six as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Let's read that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, before Sharon reads the proclamation, Kent has asked me to briefly recognize Sharon Woodard. For nearly 20 years, Sharon has dedicated her professional life to serving victims in Pinal County. She worked her way up from advocate to Director of Victim Services. In that time, she has touched countless victims' lives, brought them peace, provided guidance, and is still working to transform this office by helping to develop a crisis program to meet victims where they are in their time of need. Reading this proclamation will be her final act before she officially retires. I would ask that everyone give a round of applause in recognition of her service and as a small token of appreciation for what she has done for this community.
Good morning, Board and all in attendance. I will read the proclamation. By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclamation, National Crime Victim Rights Week, April 21st through the 27th, 2024. Whereas in the year 2023, the Pinal County Attorney's Office served over 4,457 victims and provided over 75,916 individual services. And whereas being a victim of crime and navigating the criminal justice system can be a frightening and confusing experience, and whereas progress in improving the treatment of crime victims has been made through the efforts of thousands of victims and survivors who have turned their own experiences into a force for positive change, ensuring that others can receive justice, meaningful assistance, and compassionate treatment before the law. And whereas the entire community has a role to play, and whereas involving victims, health service providers, and criminal justice professionals understand the culture, values, and expectations of unserved and underserved victims who seek assistance and justice. And whereas engaging victims, communities, and learning from leaders about their unique needs, health service providers foster a supportive and culturally relevant atmosphere in which victims can seek help and healing. And whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve victims will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas with the full weight of the community and victim service providers behind them, victims will feel understood and worthy of support and begin to heal from the trauma of victimization without fear of judgment. And whereas National Crime Victim Rights Week, April 21st through April 27th, 2024, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas Pinal County is hereby dedicating to strengthening victims and survivors, building partnerships and resilience in our community, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, does hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through April 27th, 2024 as Crime Victim Rights Week, and reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice, justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victim Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation to those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Proclaim this 24th day of April 2024. And with the supervisor's indulgence... And with the Supervisors' indulgence, I would like to recognize the victim service staff who worked tirelessly throughout the year for the victims of crime.
We would like to get a photo with all of you. Do we have room? Yeah, we can make it. I might have to sit out, but yeah, we can do it.
Center point. If you will stand in the center, whoever else you feel should be in front of the camera.
Where are you getting?
I don't know positions.
I'm gonna get you guys over on the other end. Goodman, go to your left just a little bit. There you go. I can barely see you since you're a little short. There you go. And then come in right here. There you go. And just come up. No, you're good. There you go. There you go. Scooch over just a tiny bit. No, that way. There you go, just so I can see you. There we go. I just want to make sure to see everybody. Come over just a little, right there. Come over just a little bit because I can barely see your head. There you go. There we go. Now I can see everybody. All right. And make sure you can see the camera because if you can't see it, then they can't see you. And three, two, nice, again. Three, two, one, big smile. Dog is smiling too. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Come here.
This is discussion approval disapproval of a proclamation adopting May 12th through the 18th, May 18th of 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Week. Good morning, Sheriff. How are you?
I'm doing great, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board Supervisors. Thank you so much for having us today. Yes, this is a discussion approval disapproval of a proclamation adopting May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Week, and also May 2nd as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And we would read a proclamation in if you guys approve that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item seven as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous.
And thank you, Supervisors, for your continued support to the Sheriff's Office. Our guys feel it. We appreciate it. Supervisor Sertie, thank you for acknowledging them and the work they did at Country Thunder. I think we're blessed to be in a county where we have such great support, not just from our government officials, but also from our community. And I know that our people are blessed and feel that way to work here in such a great county, and I feel blessed to be part of this as well. So thank you so much. And Natasha, she gave me a bigger print one, so now I don't have to wear my glasses today. All right, this is the Peace Officers Memorial Week, May 12th through the 18th, 2024, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 2nd, 2024. Whereas, the peace officers of Pinal County are known for their devotion and dedication to preserving the peace and safety of every man, woman, and child in this county. And whereas, the peace officers of Pinal County are engaged in a difficult and sometimes dangerous profession, which at times can lead to injury or even the death of these officers. And whereas, each day, the peace officers of the state of Arizona endeavor to reduce crime on our streets and dangers on our highways and roadways, as well as to protect us from all other kinds of crimes. And whereas, the peace officers of Pinal County also engage in crime prevention programs designed to further enhance the peace and safety of all citizens. Now therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Week, and May 2nd, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and urge all citizens of Pinal County to recognize and remember the sacrifices that these officers and their families have made and the legacy they have entrusted to all of us. Proclaim this 24th day of April 2024. Thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Thank you so much for recognizing our officers and the following.
Okay. Do we want to? Yeah, we'd like to do a photo with you. If that's okay.
Yeah, I guess that's okay.
All right.
And, okay, everybody suck it in. Three, two, and one more. Three, two, one. Nice.
Okay, item number eight. In the absence of Supervisor Miller, is there any? Do we have, Leo, is there any updates from legislation? Item number nine, purchasing division report.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, members of the Board. Angie Woods, the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, I have your purchasing division report for today, April 24th of 2024. The Board is requested to approve the following contract awards. RFP 203-026 for Public Defense Services Office Attorney Services. We're recommending contracts to be awarded to the following suppliers. AJ Law Group, PLC, Elizabeth Gonzalez. Dumond Law Firm, PLLC, Samantha Dumond. Law Office of Eric G. Crocker, PLC. Tamu Law Group, PLLC, Michael Tamu. Paul D. Green, Attorney Mediator, LLC. Sheldora Law Firm, Shadman Hosseini. Hill Law AZ, PLLC, Jennifer Hill. The term of the contract begins on April 24th, 2024, and will run concurrent with current contracts with two optional one-year extensions. This contract, again, is used by our Public Defense Services Department. RFP 243-528 for trauma counseling services. It's recommended that contracts be awarded with Mindful Staffing Solutions Incorporated, State 48 Consulting LLC. We have initial one-year term on these contracts beginning today, April 24th, with four optional one-year extensions. These contracts are used countywide. RFP 243-729, Adult and Dislocated Worker Service Provider. It's recommended to approve Eckerd Connects to be awarded a contract beginning July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, with four optional one-year extensions. The contract will be used by our Economic Development Department, the Workforce Development Division. Next, the Board is requested to approve contract amendments. RFP 170-223 for inmate telephone services. It's recommended approval of amendment number eight to exercise an optional extension period from May 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2024 with Securus. There are no extensions remaining on the contract, and it is used by our Sheriff's Office. RFP 170-423 for inmate video visitation. It's recommended approval of amendment number seven to exercise the optional extension period from May 1st of 2024 through June 30th, 2024 with Securus. There are no extensions remaining, and the contract is used by our Sheriff's Department. RFP 170-322 for inmate tablet program. It's recommended approval of amendment number seven to exercise the optional extension period from May 1st of 2024 through June 30th, 2024 with Securus. There are no extensions remaining on this contract, and it is used by our Sheriff's Office. ROQ 202-523, San Tan Valley Area Drainage Master Plan. It's recommended approval of amendment number one to approve a price increase on Project Phase Two and extend the contract through March 31st of 2025 with Intellis Incorporated. The contract is used by the Development Services Department, the Public Works Division. RFP 203-026, Public Defense Services Office Attorney Services. It's recommended approval of amendment number four to exercise optional extension period from July 1st of 2024 through June 30th, 2025, with the following suppliers. Cooper &amp; Ruder, LLP, Elizabeth Ryan Ruder. Rosinski Law Firm, PLLC, Joelanta Rosinski. Law Offices of Daniel Tholen, LLC. Weigant Law Office, PLC, Cody Weigant. Weigant Law Office, PLC, Megan Weigant. Zachary Law Group, Stephen W. Zachary. Cooper Ren Law, Dan Benjamin. Robert W. Britchett, attorney-at-law. Fox Law Group, PC, Adrian Fox. Tate and Hall, PLLC, Alexis J. Brooks. Gregan &amp; Associates, David Gregan. Jacob &amp; Bernstein Law, PLLC. There's one optional extension period remaining, and the contract, again, is used by our Public Defense Services Department. The Board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases that have been made. PO number 251-542 with M-Corps Services, Arizona, in the amount of $151,323.44 for a chiller carrier. The department using this purchase order is our Information Technology Department. PO number 251-557 with Carisoft Technology in the amount of $140,703.32 for EVS subscription. And for the record, the amount listed under department should be replaced with the Department of the Sheriff's Office. PO number 251-560, Carisoft Technology, in the amount of $106,650 for Nice Software Premier, used by our County Attorney's Office. Lastly, the Board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchases over $250,000. Requisition number 169-890 with High Tech Network and Security in the amount of $269,221.42 with Cisco Security, or for Cisco Security, excuse me, for our Information Technology Department. And lastly, requisition number 169-895 with the supplier of CDW Government, an amount of $606,856.25 for Google Workspace subscription used by Information Technology. Are there any questions?
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On item five, all the outside counsel, you may not know the answer, but is this because the county attorney would have conflicts and/or are these attorneys used because they have an area of specialty not contained within our county attorney's office?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, these contracts are used by our Public Defense Services Office, and so they are an extension of those offices for legal defense.
Forgive me, I didn't see the public defense part. There was, I think, the last couple of meetings, we've approved others that had others within them.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by anybody? Okay, a motion moving forward then.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the purchasing division report with the correction to PO number 251-557 to read Department, the Sheriff's Office.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Thank you.
That, thank you. Okay, item number 10, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member or a county manager or a member of the public objects at the time that the agenda item is called. So do we have any here that would like to pull any items? Is Mr. Allen here?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to pull item AB.
Okay, so Kevin Costello is AB. Any others? How about from the public? Anybody from the public would like to pull any agenda item? Okay, seeing that there's none, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda items, A through AW minus AB.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay.
Chairman, on item AB, we would like to withdraw that item. It is no longer necessary.
Okay, so we just need to make a motion to withdraw, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we move to withdraw item AB from the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Thank you.
That, thank you. Okay, item number 10, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member or a county manager or a member of the public objects at the time that the agenda item is called. So do we have any here that would like to pull any items? Is Mr. Allen here?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to pull item AB.
Okay, so Kevin Costello is AB. Any others? How about from the public? Anybody from the public would like to pull any agenda item? Okay, seeing that there's none, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda items, A through AW minus AB.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay.
Chairman, on item AB, we would like to withdraw that item. It is no longer necessary.
Okay, so we just need to make a motion to withdraw, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we move to withdraw item AB from the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? If any? It's unanimous. Okay. So now we're on to item... Let me get caught up where we are. Yeah. Okay, item number 11. Like I said, let me get through my notes here. All thumbs today. Item number 11, discussion approval disapproval of the Board of Supervisors Year End Report. And you've already beat me up to the punch, and so...
You took a while.
Missed. That's it, rub it in. Okay. Jill, you're on.
All right. Thank you, Chair Goodman and Supervisors. I just am here to present pursuant to ARS 15-365, the Pinal County School Superintendent's Office submits annual reports to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors on two programs. That would be the Pinal County Data Processing Consortium and the Pinal County Professional Development Department. For each program, we submitted a narrative concerning the activities of the 2324 school year, and also included our expenditure reports for each program through March 31st, 2024, with projected expenses through June 30th, 2024. I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the two, these two programs run through my office. The data processing service, the purpose of the data processing service is to work in conjunction with the Pinal County School Office Fiscal Services Department to provide mandated financial and business support services to the school districts within Pinal County, so each district can provide sound fiscal management of local, state, and federal dollars. We support the districts with electronic accounting and informational services for the Pinal County School Office, as well as the Pinal County School Districts. Electronic warrant information for the Pinal County Electronic warrant information for the Pinau County Treasurer and computer hardware, software, internet connectivity, email, and web support for the Pinau County School Office. The Pinau County Education Service Agency, we also refer to that as an ESA, so if I abbreviate, want you to know what I'm talking about. The Education Service Agency began as a vehicle to better deliver services and resources to schools and ESA establishes partnerships that provide leadership and services for enhancing the capacity of schools and communities to meet their needs of all learners. We serve 2,800 teachers and administrators and approximately 50, let's round it up, approximately 60,000 students within 19 school districts, also career and technical education and our Secure Care Program. We provide services that are defined in Title 15. Among those are professional development opportunities, data analysis and technology. All work has been coordinated and funded through the Pinau County Schools intergovernmental agreements, contracts, and grants and as well as funding from the state and the Pinau County School Superintendent's Office. Relationships with each school district focus on building capacity for sustainable change. And we have, I've included a list of many of the services that we provide in different areas such as mathematics, ESA, leadership development, ELA, special education programs, anything education related that we can help the schools with. And we do this, I wanted to, I actually have some numbers that I just wanted to kind of brag on a little bit. We do this to save our local districts money. So when we are providing services to the districts, combined with all of our districts that participate in our consortium, they pay in roughly $88,000 a year and our office provides a total of $122,000 a year worth of services. So we save the districts that money. Obviously, there are some districts who participate a lot more or a lot less. For example, Oracle pays them $1,500 for the year and they've received almost $10,000 worth of services this year. So that's our role is to help our districts with their development and to help them be fiscally responsible. Can I ask there, can I offer any answers to any questions that you may have?
Supervisor McClure.
Ms. Bressard, so looking at numbers on state testing and all those type of things, we see the averages are low. What does your office have to do with any of that in the schools? How do you help them?
Well, annually, we take a look at that data along with a huge host of data from other sources that the districts will provide or that we can receive from state level. And we disaggregate all that data and look at really where there are some weaknesses in instruction level and other issues that maybe, you know, with its classroom management skills, any of those things. And we also do a survey with the superintendents as well as the teachers as to what they feel their needs are. And then we do an annual report with the superintendents. We're doing that right now with every district superintendent. We go over those results and have discussions about how we can tailor their professional development needs. So let's say they are lower than average in their third grade reading scores or eighth grade math test scores and we tailor our programs and then additionally what we provide to those districts, schools, and all the way down to the teacher level. And then that includes coaching and support as well, mentoring.
Mr. Chair, so are you seeing improvement from the COVID scores?
Yeah, we are seeing some improvement. Really, we started to see some last year and they're creeping back up there. We all know that there's been a huge mental health crisis with our schools. I was just on a call this morning with 10 other district leaders and two of them had suicides within the last two weeks. And that's a small snippet of who we have here in the state and, you know, we're still recovering and not just, we have to make sure that their mental health needs are being addressed because we all know that if a student doesn't feel safe, secure, they're not going to learn while they're at school. So it's not just the academics that we have to focus on, but we are seeing an uptick in our scores.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
I have a comment, not a question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Superintendent Bressard. Your presentations here and elsewhere are typically thorough, concise, professional, and the way you present is humble and people notice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You've done a good job and I, you know, when you talk about Oracle and the amount of contribution and what they've received and, I mean, that's the significance of a buying power, the ability to join forces with the other school districts in combined efforts. I attribute that to, and your leadership there has been really good and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate that, board. Thank you.
Okay, can we get a motion moving forward then?
Chairman, I'm sorry. You have a card.
I have a card.
Yes.
I do have a card. I'm glad you said so. Item number 11, and I have Roberto Ravelas. Sorry about that, sir.
Thank you, Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. At two previous occasions, I have sought and other members of the public have sought answers to some questions relating to election integrity. And I think in this year in particular, it's important that we clarify to increase confidence in our election systems. I've previously asked and have not received thorough response to questions relating to illegal contributions made to 11 candidates of our county school governing boards. And the Republican Party made an honest and I think correct decision to request the return of undeniably illegal, some people refer to them as inappropriate donations to nonpartisan members of the school board. And apparently, three recipients of those illegal donations responded to the request of the Republican Party to return the donations. We don't know what happened that determined that it was okay for the rest of those recipients to not return their donations. And in fact, I tried to clarify it at a local school board meeting where I reside and I'm active. And I was told by the president of the school board that receiving those illegally donated funds was not itself illegal. So I'd like some clarification because the superintendent of schools apparently did get legal advice on this issue and for the sake of transparency and increasing respect for the integrity of our elections, I would like for her to provide information on who were the remaining board members who refused to return the illegal funds and why is it that an administrative officer, as she is, apparently is left to handle the legal question involved? Those are my questions.
Okay. Jill, are you prepared?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, we respect Mr. Ravelas' search for this information. I'm not seeing this as being related to the report that this board is currently considering. And so I think we're getting a little off the agenda at this point. Perhaps a new, you know, an item can be brought up later or some other response, but this seems to be unrelated to the year-end report for the superintendent of schools.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject that that same question arose and you board members made the decision when another member of the public raised the issue that we can, and in fact, the deputy attorney, not Mr. Costello, indicated that the topic was suitable for being added and brought up at the next opportunity when the county superintendent was unable to be here in two previous occasions.
Okay, so with that, because of the way the agenda item is actually listed, if I could give direction to our staff to take some of the things that Mr. Ravelas has brought up and then let's work with Superintendent Bressard. Okay, would that work? Is that good, Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet, you bet. Okay, with that being said, is there any, now we can go for a motion moving forward, unless there's, yes, you can go. No, well, because it's not part of the agenda, Jill, we'll do it later. So do we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 11 as presented.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, item number 12, discussion approval disapproval of proposed revisions to Pinau County Workforce Development. Mr. Joe Millman, is he here? Oh, there you are, you're hiding on me.
Chairman, unless Mr. Millman would like to give a presentation, there is no presentation. This item was continued and the recommendation is for the board to approve the item.
If I'd read my notes, I'd have seen that, right? Okay, does the board members have any questions with the report itself? Okay, do we have a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 12 as presented.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay, item number 13, public hearing and discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 2024 P Z P A 00124. It's a resolution approving case number P Z P A. And so we have Glenn that will be the presenter on this.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Glenn Bach here, senior planner. And this is three cases, P Z P A 00124, P Z 00424, P Z P D 00224.
So we're actually talking about 13, 14, and 15, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So essentially what this is, is a request to designate six acres of land for a non-major comprehensive plan amendment to re-designate from employment to general commercial to green energy production, the second being to rezone the property from G R to industrial three, and the third being to apply a pad overlay zoning district on the same six acres. This shows you the general location of the property here just east of Pinau Air Park. And aerial photo of the property. And here's looking north, south from the property. And then to date, no public comments have been received. Staff has forwarded a recommendation of approval for all three applications and the proposed rezoning will have little or no impact on the area. And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor McClure.
Mr. Bach, this is just merely a realignment of this property because it got left out of a previous rezoning. Is that correct?
Correct. It's essentially a cleanup of that that was brought about because of the need for them to apply for a minor land division for that remaining property. In processing that, it was learned that that property that was left over did not meet the minimum lot with requirements. So this will remedy that situation and allow the minor land division to proceed.
Just pushing the dotted line over a little bit.
Essentially, yes.
Okay, any other questions of Glenn? Yes, with that, we'll open up public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak, items 13, 14, and 15, from the public? Seeing that there's none, we'll close our public meeting, hearing, public hearing, and we'll reconvene. And so is there any other discussion or anything of that nature? If not, do we have a motion moving forward? Do we have to take each one of them by item?
Sorry, pushed a button. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 13 as presented with no stipulations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any oppose? It's unanimous. Item number 14.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 14 as presented with one stipulation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Unanimous. Item 15.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 15 as presented with 22 stipulations.
Okay, do we have a, we have a second? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Unanimous. Okay. Item number, those are the ones I like, actually. Item number 16, this is a public hearing and discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 224 P Z P A 00523. It's a resolution approving this particular case and we have, is Sagita here? There she is, right there in front of me.
Good morning, Chair, vice chair and board members. Sagita Decker, senior planner, presenting the next case. There are three cases in, under the Tela Peralta project. We have the first one, which is a non-major comprehensive plan amendment, and then there's a rezone and a pad overlay. This.
So again, Sagita, this is 16, 17, and 18, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
So the first case is a minor comprehensive plan amendment, which is a land use change from open space to general commercial for 124.86 acres. The second case, which is a rezone for the same acres, however, it is from G R, which is general rural existing CB1 local business zone and manufactured home zone to C3, which is general commercial zoning district. And the pad overlay is for the same acreage, 124.86, for an Ecorisor. The proposal, as mentioned, is for the commercial district C3 zoning for 124.86 acres. The location is east of US 60 of Peralta Road, end of the Gold Rush Road. The owner is Amy Doyle, representative of Rafter D Cattle Company, Inc., and the agent is Rose Law Group, and Jordan Rose is the representative. The county map showing the location for this project, you can see that it's in the northern portion, Apache Junction area, which is just south of the Superstition Mountains. And it is north of the Pinau County Peralta Park, and I can show you that further. That's the yellow portion, which is the Peralta Regional Park, Pinau Counties. The red portion is the portion that is the requested. The red portion is the portion that is requesting the land use change and a rezon and a pad overlay. One can see that the green portion on the north is the Superstition Mountains, and it includes a ton of forest. We can see that general rural surrounding these parcels. Further zooming into the comprehensive plan and the parcels showing the existing major open space for the parcels that have been requested for this project. And the proposed is the general commercial. You can see the two maps, the change that would happen from a major open space to the commercial portion of this. The aerial also shows a large riparian edge on the eastern, and it goes across diagonally. And I can show you further into this aerial that shows the Gold Rush Road, which is the access from the west portion of this project. And on the eastern side, which is showing some small structures, which is the cattle ranch. It's an existing working cattle ranch, and the riparian area, which is bisecting at the southern portion, southeast portion of this parcel. The zoning that is showing, it's surrounded by state land, and one can see that it just sits below the Tonto National Forest, and at the number of parcels that are involved, and it does have the zoning, CB1 existing, MH zoning, and GR zoning. Further zooming into this buffer zone actually covers really three or four parcels that were intimated. However, there were a larger number of agencies that we reached out to for this project, and it involves more than the 600 buffer. Some site context and surroundings for this parcel, one can see that it is surrounded by state land on all three sides, and some pictures showing the natural beauty existing around this very large area. We can see that superstition wilderness to the east, the picture showing that. South is the Peralta Regional Park, and, you know, it's basically part of a very large open space. Some background information and history along this. The Bacchus Doyle family has owned the property since 1977. And at that point in time, when they inherited or when they bought this, it already had the CB1 zoning, which is a commercial zoning. It has a manufactured home zoning and a GR zoning. It's under the case PZ is 506-77. The cattle ranch has been in operation since 1850s, and we can see that it's on the right side in the red oval portion, and the riparian portion habitat going and cutting across in the southeast part of this parcel. The owners do have access to the site through the state land and are in the process of acquiring this permanently for this project. The owners have been using this venue due to its unique location for wedding events with temporary use permits across multiple last couple of years. The proposed development plan shows, this is a draft plan showing the main access on the west side, the east Gold Rush Road, which is a Peralta, coming from the Peralta Road, and the existing cattle ranch to the right side, which is the eastern portion, is going to remain the way it is, and that has been carved out and just is going to continue its operations the way it has been. To further show the development plan in detail, I would like to show this in different phases as proposed. The phase one includes the red circles, the eco resort, the guest venue, the event space, which is on the extreme west side. And it includes a restaurant with wine tasting and the Sonoran culinary experience, which includes a gift shop and guest employee parking, some with solar shades. And of course, that's the point where there would be the transportation drop-off area for the tourists or resort people who would want to visit this. The right portion in the oval shows the first phase where the resort residences would be developed on the northern portion of this project boundary. Some pictures showing, some renderings at this point at the very initial phases of development, trying to show structures that are going to be kind of earthhugging to this, to the surrounding environments and respecting that. The phase two portion shows in the oval, which is the eco lodging, the single room residences. It's going to also be a portion where the restoration of areas that are going to be disturbed, where landscaping and concerted measures would be taken. Trails with resorts, open spaces, development with natural plant material are going to be added in this single room residences areas. The phase three is shown, and again, in green circles and in these bubble diagrams where small event spaces, small and medium-sized event areas are going to be developed with wine tasting events or events that can be used for multiple other purposes. Holistic spa is an important aspect of the phase three. Employee bunk houses, and I am sorry, I think this is not the last one that was, this does not include the amphitheater, so I think yesterday's presentation is not the one. I'm sorry for the interruption. There were some changes that happened after the PNZ, and there was an updated presentation which included additional stipulation, and that's what this one is. I'm going to directly take you to...
Wait, wait just a second.
Okay.
Okay. There you go.
Okay.
And just for the record, the updated presentation is attached to the agenda item.
So basically, this is the third phase, which is, as I talked about, was the event spaces, small and medium sizes, the holistic spa, the employee bunk houses, and the trash and recycling areas. We're trying to use sustainable methods in this complex, resort complex. Some of the features for the Tela Peralta Eco Resort are, the development philosophy ensures that open spaces are respected and the Sonoran desert environment are protected with minimal disturbance respecting this ecology of this superstition area. Underlying theme is, again, the eco-friendly resort adopting sustainable methods for construction. Uses allowed with the only related to the ecotourism. Built structures will be earthhugging, really not protrating out, kind of gelling with the environment, and it'll be little outcrops that blend with height restrictions that are part of the development standard. Site plan process will be triggered after the zoning entitlement and ensure all stipulations are met and related to the eco resort. Some development standards here, permitted uses for commercial uses are related to the eco resort use and functions. Standards for C3 zoning, again, related to the uses specific for this resort. An important feature would be the open space development standards, which are also added in the stipulations, would be the 35% of open spaces that would be preserved and protected for any kind of alterations that include, you know, new development for 15% slopes and greater, riparian areas, rocky outcrops, and dense vegetations. Some pictures, north, south, east, and west. Some items for board's consideration and discussions would be that the comprehensive plan, the main intent is that it designates as a major open space. And the intent here is, again, trying to maintain that with a use that would be gelling with the environment and the use that is tourist uses. Open space development is for a resort, recreational amenities, parks, trails, wildlife corridors, and passive activities that the public can enjoy. Recreation uses aligns with the vision for the use for passive recreation activities under the open space designation. It does meet the vision of the area and models a case for sustainable development, integrating environment and economic development for the area. The rezoning and the pad overlay, as mentioned earlier, the existing rezon, zoning is CB1, MH, and GR, and the request is for C3 zoning for this 124.86 acres. If this case is not approved, it can be developed for greater densities, which we really do not want this to be developed for greater in densities as is currently existing. Total 51 dwelling units have been proposed in this plan with a density of .41 dwelling units per acre. Restriction of this would curtail the opportunity for any intense development and aligns with the intent of minimum land use, minimum, you know, disturbance for this land and kind of protecting the pristine areas for the superstition mountains. The pad overlay restricts the uses to resort and its associated recreational activities. There are 44 stipulations within the staff report that ensure that county requirements and vision for the area are not compromised considering the natural assets that this place has. The various agencies, as mentioned earlier, were kind of intimated of this, and all of their, I would say, suggestions and recommendations have been added in the stipulations that are there in the large 44 stipulations. Some of the public responses that we received were, you know, concerns related to noise, traffic, and dark sky issues that were shared by the property owners, and, you know, issues of illegal camping and trash issues, ecology at risk, and, you know, the disturbance of the solitude and the common environment. Resort would be accessible only to people who can afford, and the disappearance of the desert environment. However, we did receive support letters for the very reason that the clustering of units reduces additional areas for any other, you know, more additional disturbance of the areas, ecotourism and additional amenities that people would be able to enjoy. Planning and zoning recommended approval with 920, and staff recommended approval with 44 stipulations, with an addition of the last stipulation to add, to be added, and is part of your staff report. Applicant to dedicate an inform acceptable to the county a helipad area to the Penellas County PCSO for operations of emergency services. The dedication should accommodate a minimum design standards as identified by the United States Federal Aviation Administration Advisory Circular dated 150, 5390-2D, which is dated as 152023 and as approved by Penellas County Sheriff's Office. This was an added stipulation after the planning and zoning recommended approval, and they did approve a dedication of a heliport. However, this was crafted later on with staff working with the Sheriff's Office and various other agencies and the applicant. I'm open for any questions at this point.
Supervisor Sertie.
Yeah. Will the developers present as well, or only you?
We have a presentation by the applicant, and yes, Jordan is going to be there.
One of the questions I want to ask them is, there's a lot of concern about air traffic, and if this helipad does go there, will they be flying over Gold Canyon and Apache Junction if they could specify that? They can do that during their presentation if they want.
Yes, they would be.
Well, thank you, Sagita, and Gilbert, and Brent, and really your whole staff, and Connie, your Chief of Staff, Supervisor, Chairman, and Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group. And today, I'm super excited to be here with Amy and Mike Doyle. Amy is the daughter of Chuck and Judy Bacchus, who have owned the property for 50 years and worked that property, and Amy and Mike now own the property. I'm also here with Jennifer Hall, the planner in my office. We have been working on this project for nearly four years with all of you and with the Doyle family, and we're so excited. I get to stand up here on behalf of lots of applicants, lots and lots of times. I feel lucky for that. But I've never stood up and said, we're going to build the best small resort property in the world, an eco-friendly resort property in the world. And that's the vision, and I just want to run through this very quickly to show you what it will look like, although it will look so much better in person. Answer to your question, Supervisor Sertie, the helicopters, if there are rescue operations, they will land on this property, but they'll go over the highway. There won't be going over residential homes, and I appreciate that question. It's obviously very important.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay. So they've had this property in their family for generations, and if you haven't gone out, and I think all of you have, but others who haven't been out to see this land, hike, and just recreate, it's amazing. I had a big birthday, you know, one of those big birthdays, and I actually took 50 couples out there to camp on her property, and it was magical. I mean, it was like the greatest thing ever, so thank you to them. And others will be able to enjoy that soon. Chuck and Judy originally bought the land and really are committed to conservation. This whole family's life has been about conservation and really maximizing the conservation, the beauty of the land. They want to share this. They think it's the most beautiful part of Arizona. I agree. I'm sure Supervisor Sertie agrees. With a small group of worldwide travelers, here are some of the renderings. They're very high-end. I'm going to call them tents. I'll put air quotes around the tents. But it's a real luxury experience in the heart of the superstition mountains. So the desert's just incredibly lush. And again, the goal is to become the best eco-friendly resort in the world. And you can see this here is the, it's constantly moving, but this here is sort of the clubhouse where you enter, where the meals will be served. It just looks very unimposing in the desert. And again, here's a visual of a traveler sitting there looking at the stars. And here's an interior vision of the tent with the greatest view on the planet. I don't know that they'll ever get people to leave these units. It's so pretty. So thank you, and thanks to the whole county for being so incredibly supportive. We also listened with the community and removed what we had previously had, an amphitheater and a shooting gun range. We removed those based on some community conversation. And thank you, Leo, for your leadership, too. So much appreciated. We'll take any questions.
I think nobody has any. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing for 16, 17, and 18. I have a couple of cards here. Kim Grady.
Commissioner, Chair, thank you for allowing me to present today. I'm Kim Grady. I live in unincorporated Penellas County. I've been there for 27 years, Arizona resident since July 4, 1976. I like this project, I really do. I respect the right of the property owners to do what they want with their property. But because I've been involved with open space protection, conservation for 14 years since I moved to Penellas County, I was asked by my neighbors, my community, to look into this project because we had several concerns. And they were mainly around the motivation for the project and around the transparency and the advocacy of the project. So I did, I started investigating, and on March 21, I went to the PNZ hearing. And what I saw there was a very well-presented project and very thoughtful, just like you saw today. But I also saw a process that I felt was in error, probably not in the best of the public's interests. There were a lot of oppositions proposed, and only two in support, and that was from the Rose Law Group and from... the Rose Law Group and from an original Gold Canyon developer. It was pretty much obvious to me that this was going to pass because the commission, the P&amp;Z Commission, liked it, and in fact, one of the commissioners at that time said that you, Supervisor Sertie, really wanted it. And I felt like that comment was not in the public proper advocacy, I felt like that comment did not reflect what a commissioner should be doing. A commissioner should be bringing back public input and things to you, to the BOS, they should not be supporting one commissioner. So I went online and I posted my observations at the P&amp;Z meeting to let my community know what I thought of that meeting. I got 6.2,000 hits on that post and over 300 comments and remaining concerns, and I would just like for you guys today, before you take the vote on this, to consider that we don't feel that we were properly advocated, number one, and number two, we don't feel like there has been proper addressing of some of the remaining issues. Specifically, that property is surrounded by state land. What's going to protect us from that state land being rezoned? Rezoning is a big deal. I know from my experience, I've never been able to rezone anything, I've never been able to get a variance on anything, it gets shot down right away. So why this project, why this property? And I think you really need to take a close look at that, and before you vote today, give us some kind of an idea what you might be able to do to protect us from that state property being rezoned, being taken over by foreign investors. And then the last thing is, how are you going to protect it from invasive things, human and plant? There wasn't a whole lot of discussion about how a lot of traffic brings things into that area, and it's going to happen, and nobody has really come up with a plan for that, nobody has really said anything about that. So before you take the vote today, can we hear a little bit about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next card I have is Harold Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Harold Chris.
I'm done, buddy.
Am I already, I'm already done? Thank you very much. I'm here to exhibit my support for the Doyle family, the Bacchus', I met Chuck Bacchus over 50 years ago, I hate to admit that, especially to myself, but one day he drove in to Gold Canyon when we were developing it, and he had a truckload of batteries that he was working off of a solar device that he had up on this property, and he invited me up to see this. And it's a very, very unique piece of property, it really is, I think, as Jordan Rose expressed, it's so unique that it's going to attract and draw people that are never going to be able to experience the Superstition Mountains and this area and the beauty that it has. It's on a private piece of ground, as the land was at Gold Canyon when we developed it, we did not rezone any state land, we did not do any BLM land, and I don't see them asking to do that either. So I would encourage you to take a couple who now own this property and are exhibiting the same intent that their parents did and saying, "We want to preserve this for the next generations." We're seeing so many things happen to our generations that are going to follow us, that are not going to get to enjoy the things that these people are attempting to preserve. So I would encourage you to vote in favor of this particular property, it's going to bring some very special things into Penile County, not in a way that's going to distract from what we have, but in a way to encourage others to follow with similar quality things in other areas around the county. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Is there any others that would like to speak to this in the public? Mr. Ravelis, I'll get back to you in the corner.
Roberto Ravelis, 30-year resident of Gold Canyon, native Arizona. One of my first sculpting projects when I was a little youngster, living then in Superior, was to do a sculpture of the view of the superstitions. I have a lifetime of admiration for this area, and I am an advocate for preserving these unique natural beauties that are incomparable. I'm inclined to excitedly, exuberantly support this, but I'm also a person who feels that public lands adjoining private property ought to have an opportunity to be supported. I think that you're bound to, and I am inclined to urge approval of this, but I have been on the hot seat many times on projects of developing but preserving, and they've hinged the criticisms on the lack of enforcement. I think that this can be a wonderful gem to be added to our area, but I also think it's incumbent for the Board of Supervisors to ensure us in the public, who have been disappointed at the lack of traffic enforcement, we're hopeful also that there will be stringent support enforcement of dark skies. And so I've got mixed feelings, but I know as an advocate for use of our natural resources, if they're going to be used, this is the most appealing way in which I think we can have the amenities that are going to be provided in this. So I urge you to approve this, but also ensure that the helipad, air traffic, the local trafficking, the land squatting, the invasion of the state lands that are unprotected, that they do get the emphasis. And with that, I support approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelis. Connie, did you have something you wanted to add as a public?
Connie Vandril, I'm a resident of Apache Junction, and thank you for this opportunity. I am also a former Forest Service employee who worked with the Bacchus family for years and years, I have a 30-year experience with them, and couldn't ask for a better family to be partners with, number one, on a federal level, state level, and also as a county partner. They're great people. One thing that's not being said here today is that part of this whole thing will be education, not only for the public, but for future generations. The Doyle's plan to continue educating people about ranching, Chuck Bacchus is a professor at ASU and highly respected. The whole family has always been eco-conscious, and having this be one of the first really nice resorts other than Gold Canyon, and the way it's being developed is just an asset to the whole Superstition region. And I think if you did have our federal partners here, I saw the state land has been involved in this, I think you'd hear the same thing from your federal partners, that they highly support this. So thank you for the opportunity to help, I hope you vote yes on this, thank you.
Thank you, Connie, for your thoughts. We've got one more. Come on up.
My name is Rich Anderson, I am a resident of Gold Canyon, and just to give you a little background for me, I have 2,000 documented hiking and bicycling miles around this area. I know the land to the north of her ranch, to the south, to the east, and to the west, and I'm here to support this project. I was able to review on foot some of the areas that she's talked about developing and what she's trying to do, and I am absolutely in favor of this. I'm in agreement, this is a balanced, a very balanced project, and I would encourage you guys to vote yes.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment? Seeing as that they're, oh.
Chairman of the Board Supervisors, I'm Belinda Rodriguez, and I'm here as a resident of Gold Canyon. I haven't had a lot of time to look at this project in detail, but I hear many, many people saying that if we are going to have any economic development into that area, they don't want large companies, they don't want battery companies coming in and destroying the atmosphere and the environment. Having been in tourism at the Arizona Department of Tourism office years ago, this is probably one of the best things that could happen to the area, to help bring in dollars through tourism. And so just having seen it on the surface, I'd like to look into it further, but I think if you're going to bring any kind of money or funding into the area, this is probably one of the best ways to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public? All right. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Any discussion Supervisor Sertie? Natasha, can we have the picture back up from the presentation? I want to address several things that were said. One, it will absolutely be dark skies. One of the issues with the squatters, illegal camping, that starting in 2025, when the road becomes paved, that both sides of Peralta will be fenced, so there will not be any illegal camping off of Peralta, and the ATVs cannot go out and destroy the desert beyond what you see. As for the state land, yes, we don't have control over state land, they could sell it, we could control what goes in there, but for everything you see in this picture here, plus beyond, all those other pictures, it will be preserved, there will never be a mass of houses or anything built there. So this is preserving it and saving the zoning. And yeah, a lot of the reason there were so many in opposition is because it gets out of hand on social media with people speculating and jumping into conclusions. I heard one still going out there that there'll be 100 employees for this. There will only be at the most 30 or 40 guests, so how could there be more than 10, 15 employees? And even, they won't even be there all at the same time. So a lot of speculation and rampant rumors that just were not happening, there were never going to be a six-story resort back there, what you see is what you're getting there. So like those that spoke, this is the ideal use for this area, and it puts the whole region in a positive light, and people that visit, they eventually stay and they'll live in other areas. So those are addressing some of the things said.
Thank you, Supervisor Sertie. You know, just to add, I've been a resident of Arizona for 65 years now, 50 of it, you know, the first 12 years of my life, we lived, or 10 years of my life, we lived off of Chris Monroe and University, and Dad and Mom built several homes in that region right there, and I couldn't wait to get out of the desert when we moved closer into town around some farm ground. And yet, as I go out in those areas today, I look up around Red Mountain and the development that's taking place there and the beauty of it, you go out to Gold Canyon, very well-done, very well put together. I sat in Supervisor Sertie's office about eight years ago, or seven years ago, and we were up in their conference room, and it was a beautiful picturesque view of the Superstition Mountains that was a silhouette in the background there, you remember that? And as we sat there, one of the things that we were talking about was bringing these type of amenities that are in the Scottsdale and the other areas, especially with the picturesque views and things that we have out in this area, we need that stuff, we need those type of amenities, and we need to take, City of Mesa has taken more advantage of the Superstition Mountains than Apache Junction ever has, and that needs to be reversed, and even Penile County has. And so this is an opportunity for us to move forward. As far as State Land Department and the policing of all of those amenities, what Mr. Ravelis brought up and things of that nature, you know, we as a county, we have very limited resource available to us. Those other agencies, they need to step up and provide the police enforcement, that's our state representatives, our state legislators that have the purse to control the dollars and funds available to police those areas. Our sheriff's department's doing as good as they can, they help, and then Supervisor Sertie's done a great job working with the different stakeholders out in that area, where the squatters and things that was brought up earlier, to where we've been able to clean up a lot of that stuff. As far as state land and what they do with their land, I don't know how many millions of acres.
Nine million.
There we go.
And there are four employees to patrol it all, and they're not allowed to have firearms. So can you imagine going up on an encampment unarmed to check permits and to possibly evict them? It's terrible, and it all falls back to our sheriff's department, and we have other things to do, and we don't get reimbursed for that, we can't take care of their nine million acres.
Well, part of the other problem is, it's private land still, it's state trust land, and so we have to have permission to be able to go in and do, which is, we've been working on some things with state land. But to preserve that area and the beauty of it and everything else, I think is really on the radar for all of us that are sitting on this board going forward, because we, you know, I've learned to appreciate the desert, especially in the green whenever the rains come, and it's just been amazing to me. So anyway, I think you can tell where, and two, the comment was made about, you know, we as board members, we really need to be objective and review and look at various projects that come in, and what's actually going to add value to the region as a whole. And when I say value, I'm not just talking about the land itself, but I'm also talking to the families that live here, that they're able to go out, what was the gentleman came up, and he said he's got over 2,000 miles on the trails? I probably have the same amount, I just never did really keep track of it. I don't know how many times I've been up the Superstition Mountains, we've climbed as a scout, and back up there, Weaver's Needle, I don't know how many times we hacked all the way up to, and I know it was just to get us rambunctious boys under control so that they can do more with us and be more teachable, but nonetheless, that's a beautiful and just an awesome area, and I'm glad to see something like this, to be honest with you, and especially people that have owned it for that long, they've gained a big respect and appreciation for what they have, and I think it shows that in what the presentation here today. So anyway, that's my two cents. So if there's any other comments or not, let's get a motion moving forward then. Oh, we're going to take one each one, 16, 17, and 18, all right, just so we make sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 16 as presented, and I do not see stipulations in this one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Item number 17.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 17 with one stipulation.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That has passed. Item number 18.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 18 as presented with 44 stipulations.
Second.
Do we need to read any of those in? Okay, we're good, it's all, okay, all right. So we have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And again, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. You bet, thank you. Item number 19, discussion of board members' requests for future agenda items and reports to be presented. to Be Presented in an Upcoming Meetings. Is there anybody that would like to have some agenda items added for our next meetings? Supervisor McClure.
Thank you. You read my thought bubble. Did you put a motion forward earlier about... I can't even think now what that was. You asked staff to look into something, oh, about the school district, about Bressard's stuff. That's already...
Yes, that can be addressed at a future, put on a future agenda to make sure that it is worded in a way that we can address Mr. Ravelis's concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Any others that would like to see? Wow. Okay. Seeing that there's none, item number 20, This is a Discussion of Approval/Disapproval of Proclamation Adopting the Week of April 14 through April 20, 2024 as National Volunteer Week. Gosh dang, nobody's here to hear the... If it's passed. So, with that being said, is there any discussion or anything, or do we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 20, the proclamation adopting the week of April 14 through 20, 2024 as National Volunteer Week.
Do we have a second? Yes.
Chairman, if I may, the recommended motion is to approve as presented with the correction adopting the week of April 21 through April 27 as National Volunteer Week.
Oh, yeah, that note.
21 through 27.
That's what I meant. So, I... Okay, let me revise my motion. I move to approve item 20 as presented with the correction adopting the week of April 21 through 27, 2024 as National Volunteer Week.
Okay. We have motion now. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? We have it.
Is there one, or is there a proclamation to be read?
Right here.
Right there. Oh, and you're reading it.
Yeah, I wanted to be selfish and do it. You know, I kind of...
Can we get a picture with you?
Yes, yes. I'd be willing to do that, and I am, I'm not afraid to be in front of the camera. We've had a lot of cleanup in each of our areas too, and I think we ought to give thanks to our citizens that are out there for the efforts of volunteering to come and help us with our neighborhoods and roads and infrastructure. So, the Pinal, by the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclamation, National Volunteer Week of April 21 through April 27 of 2024. Whereas, National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 to commemorate the impact of volunteers in their communities and encourage others to engage in service. And whereas, both individuals and volunteer groups play a crucial role in fostering a thriving, resilient community, enhancing the quality of life and well-being for residents of Pinal County. And whereas, the 132 appointed residents of Pinal County serve a vital function by dedicating their time to various civic affairs through 18 boards and commissions. And whereas, our volunteer workforce represents a significant asset, and today, we commend those who have stepped forward to serve on a board or a commission, acknowledging their dedication during our annual volunteer appreciation luncheon. Now, therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do hereby designate April 21 through April 27 of 2024 as National Volunteer Week in Pinal County, Arizona, and urge all residents of Pinal County to explore opportunities to contribute to our community. Proclaim the 24th day of April, 2024.
Bang that gavel.
Okay. And with that...
Chairman, we do have some volunteers in the audience. If we can get a picture with the proclamation.
There you go. Let's do it. And then I'll hammer the baby.
No, don't hammer the baby.
Oh, that was the wrong word.
Good call.
Who are we going to get to hold this one? Oh, here we go.
And happy faces. Three, two, nice, one more. Three, two, one.
Coffee's available in the lobby?
That was pretty loud, wasn't it?
I used to smack him when I was on the school board. He used to smack everybody in the room and jump.
Dang, really.
Was one of them supposed to jump?